Right, I think it should be good to go now. Welcome everybody to our bi-weekly digital service work group call. And today we're gonna have a special session for architects. We invited some guest speakers today that can really speak to that topic.
Really speak to that topic.
And what we're gonna try to do is tie that back into a lot of the things that we've been talking about over the last few months. And I think it's a pretty relevant topic for where we are in those discussions. Before we start, I always like to go through this just to let everybody know what the group is about. So we started back in 2018 and we've been meeting every other week since 2018. Back in June, when we first started, June of 2018, we had about two people that were coming on the call, between two and 10. And as you can see, it's grown pretty significantly since then. Our vision has changed a little bit. We were really focused at the beginning on getting the CMDB right. But we broadened it a little bit this year to be more wholly focused on a digital transformation. So to go a little bit broader, because that's really what we're trying to do is, as we build those services out, is being able to be better about doing things like automation and the structuring of those services. So our mission here is to bring the members together so that they could really get enabled on those things. We share work whenever we can. I'm gonna share some stuff today with everybody at the conclusion of the call. And we have a Google Drive where we keep all of our papers, all of our recordings, everything we've done since back in 2018. There might be some stuff on there that's even getting pretty dated at the time. My team is the one who hosts these calls and you'll see people from my team coming in from time to time. I'm on the Enterprise Architect team at ServiceNow. There's about 20 of us in North America. And then we have also people coming in from other countries to help us on the EA, from the EA team as well. And our executive sponsor is our leader Jeff Lubay. He's the one who runs the Americas Enterprise Architecture Team. So today, like I said, we have a special session. I want to get there pretty quickly, so I want to get there in the next two minutes. And we're gonna go through in the beginning, just level set, like I said, where we are. I'm gonna do that real quick. Then we're gonna bring Peter in from, and Peter's gonna come in from Inspy, talk to us a little bit about how you approach capabilities. I know a lot of us today haven't even started on our business capabilities and that part of the common service data model. So Peter's gonna talk a little bit about how to approach that. Janet and Craig are gonna come in from Esri and talk about how they're using the platform to do enterprise architecture at Esri. They're a GIS company out of Redlands, California. And then Duran's gonna come on from our product management team and talk to you a little bit about some of the advanced cases that our APM product handles. Okay, so the role of architects in service delivery, the ones that we've been talking a lot about. And this is a new slide, so I want to drop this slide in there. I know Mitch mentioned last time we're on the call, how much he likes to steal slides from this. So what we have here is the, the, the common service data model. And the piece we're gonna talk about today is the part in the design domain that we haven't spent a lot of time on in this group so far. So this is where the EA's really come in and transitioned from the demand-based plan. And we've been talking about mostly more to the capability-based planning. The other area we're talking about, we had this slide up before, where we're talking about the actual delivery of services and how it goes through that transition. And where EA comes in there is that strategic architecture area. So this is more talking about the role and what these EA's do to help with delivering these services. So with that level set, I'm gonna welcome Peter to take over sharing. And he's gonna take us through the approach to capability development. So Peter, take it away. I think you could just steal screen share. You there, Peter?
I was on mute. Yeah, thanks, John. Doesn't look like I'm a presenter.
Okay, let me see. I thought you had that. I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing on my side and then switch to presenter. Still there, Peter?
Yep, I'm here. I still present, my share button isn't active.
Okay, let me see why my computer is spinning on me. What a bad time to spin out. Could you still see my screen?
Yeah, I can see your screen. I can see you.
Okay. We'll get back to my meeting. Is anybody else from ServiceNow able to get on the meeting and switch Peter to sharing? My computer seems to be seized up at the moment.
There it goes.
All right.
So I made him presenter.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate the save on that one.
I'm just gonna share my screen here. Okay, yeah, hi, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you. I'm Peter Charlton. I'm with Inspy. I joined the company just at the beginning of this year in the role of Director of Practice Consulting for US. I'm gonna roll through these slides pretty quickly, cognizant of time. And I've already, we've already lost a couple of minutes. Inspy, we're a ServiceNow partner. We have some solutions that are built native on the Now platform. And we'll see a very brief demo of one of them at the end of my slides here. Get right into this. I'm gonna talk about business capabilities. And some of this is gonna be very, very basic. I still see a lot of people out there, a lot of organizations out there, really not getting the definition right of capabilities and how you, how you create a capability map and structure all that. So very basic stuff I'm gonna start with. It's, to me, it's all about telling the story of the enterprise. These are the, the elements of circumstance. This goes all the way back to Aristotle, if you're familiar with these things, the five W's, one H, why, how, what, who, where, when. So why, how, and what are that? The highest order primitive concepts, they can't be abstracted up to a higher level. Why is obviously the domain of strategic planning? How, those are the processes, how we do things. Who, when, and where are details of the how? And that leaves what? And what describes the kind of work that the enterprise does? So what is what? Well, there's some common descriptions we'll see out there. You'll see a simple one that says it's an ability of the enterprise to do something. Okay, that's nice, but that's not very precise. The one there in the middle was a form of customer mind. I kinda liked this description. It's a high-level taxonomy of work, managed taxonomy of what we do. So capabilities classify the kind of work that we do. They're the whats that senior leaders particularly care about. And while they're abstract concepts, they do represent combinations of tangible things. People, process, information, and technology make up the capability. And there's a standard definition. This comes right out of the BizBok. If you're not familiar, that's the Business Architecture Body of Knowledge. That's managed by the Business Architecture Guild. And that's really looked upon today as the standard for business architecture. It's all about what business does. Talk a little bit about what versus how, because this is one area where people often confuse the concepts. And we really need to know what we do before we can describe how we do it. And the whats are not difficult or costly to define, whereas hows can be very costly. That's process modeling and that takes a lot of effort. And the whats haven't changed very much. They don't change very much. How changes radically. An example of that would be, you know, they what vehicle assembly hasn't changed in forever. Ever since, ever since that came to be a thing, it hasn't changed. Whereas the how has changed a lot, different tools, materials, robots, computers. So that's why we start with the what when we start to describe the business and want to align our IT to the business. It's the best anchor point for doing that. It's the best starting point where we can start to analyze our IT portfolios and what they do for the business. And to get into some do's and don'ts, capability mapping. And pretty fundamental stuff. The capability map should be a pure hierarchy. Each capability should be unique, mutually exclusive, no overlap. Children only belong to one parent. And we should think about capabilities, high-level things. Typically executives are aware of them and care about them. And this is even getting very, very fundamental here. This is classification theory, right? So how do we classify things? Well, if I'm, if I have an animal enclosure in a zoo and I think that stripes are the primary attribute of my animals, how I would group them, that's not gonna turn out very well, is it? Well, these are both mammals, one of them's a carnivore. So if I focus on the stripes, my tigers are gonna eat my zebras. A similar thing can happen with capability model. If you classify things using the wrong attribute of it, you see this example over here where there's, you know, geography is brought up elevated to a level that it shouldn't be there. And we have things that are grouped together that really do not belong together. So don't do that. The other thing is they get confused with our concepts. So if a capability name definition or the structure doesn't seem quite right, that's often because it's mixed up and can probably contain some process or organization characteristics, some how, who, or where. And another issue with it is historically in EA, the what has been represented by business function. Like in early days of EA, we used to build functional decomposition models to describe the enterprise. Before this idea of a capability was a, was a concept. But, you know, function often gets confused with organization, right? Outside the circles of enterprise architects. That's a common pitfall. Another thing is don't go too deep. If you think, think and look at most capability maps at the top level, most organizations will have somewhere around 16 to 24 top-level capabilities. And if you think about the average number of children, assume five, three, three, they're hierarchy, it's gonna have 600 leaf node, 3,000 when you get to four layers, 15,000, you get to five layers. I've seen capability maps that were seven and eight layers deep and they're just unworkable at that point. It just completely defeats the purpose of capability mapping, which is high-level analysis and planning. Getting started, so you can start from scratch. It's actually really easy to do this. You just identify the nouns or the, you know, the business objects, the things that are important to enterprise. Example, your main product. And you start to pair them with verbs and you'll end up describing capabilities, product management, product marketing. This can actually be done pretty quick. But I also highly recommend people start with reference models. There's some good ones out there. The Business Architecture Guild that I mentioned earlier, they have industry reference models. There's also APQC's Process Classification Framework. Is a pretty good, the high layers of that are pretty good starting points. So start with something that already exists, but you will inevitably have to create some areas in your capability map that are unique to your specific business or organization. A little bit about leveling. We think about what every enterprise or organization does. At the top level, we all only do four things, design things, sell things, produce things, manage things. But those are too high to be meaningful. So if you take those down to the next level, there you have your level one capabilities. That sets the top, the top layer of your capability model at an even level. Little bit about capability attribution. So once we've defined a capability map, what are the things we want to know about it? Well, we want to know the importance or criticality of our capabilities. We want to know their health, maturity, their performance. And the four areas are the things I mentioned earlier, the tangible things that make up the capability, people, process, information, and technology. If we're just getting started, we can use qualitative ways of assessing these things. When we're a little more mature, we can use quantitative, based on actual data. And of course, you want to map the capabilities to some other key components, organization, information, and applications, value streams, if you're doing that, strategy initiatives. With that kind of attribution, we can start to do some really valuable capability-based analysis things. Oh, I didn't, I got the wrong slide here. I didn't get the one that I had finished. Oh, well, I will speak to it. So there's, there's some analysis we can do that's around looking at the criticality versus health and importance, considering target current state versus target state and identifying possible opportunities for improvement. There's analysis around cost, investment costs, OpEx costs, whether or not our best investment dollars are aligned appropriately according to the criticality of our various capabilities. And then there's also looking at it from risk. So what, what business capabilities are risk? Because we've got underlying technologies that are end of life or soon will be or have known vulnerabilities. And when I, when I've been in situations where maybe the business wasn't really aware of business capabilities and I wanted to start to get their intention, their attention, there's, there's things I would focus on. So when I was a kid, my mom used to bake bread and that would be, you know, every other week or so. And I'd come home from school and walk in the house and I would smell that immediately and it smelled really good. So I want to start doing things that catch people's attention. So what's the first thing that leaders want to know about with, with IT? They want to know what they have and what it does for them, right? What applications do they have and how do they support the capabilities? Next thing they definitely want to know is what does it cost me? And finally, they want to know if there's any, any risk to the business because of the portfolios. You know, a few years ago, the CIO target was fired because of a cyber breach. So this stuff is important to leaders. So it's also really important to engage our business stakeholders as early as possible. And again, if we're not already focused on this, these are some of the ways you can get their attention. So with that, I'm gonna do a brief demonstration of capability mapping in Inspy. And I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna show it in one of our products. I'll talk briefly about our other products here. So we have three products that run on ServiceNow. Free Lucy is a visual relationship editor. It kinda changes the way you manage, create, remap relationships. And you can, so you can create them, you can remap them, delete them. You can review changes before committing. And I'll show you a brief little example here of remapping. So this is taking, in this case, there's an application that is on the input side of this bamboo HR and we're changing it to the output side. There's as simple as that, we've remapped, we changed that relationship. There's a little more to it than that, but that just gives you a brief introduction. Thing I'm gonna show you today is Designer. This is allows you to do real-time diagram and modeling the data that you already have in your ServiceNow environment. So you can bring them into, into visual diagrams and edit that. You can keep stuff in your diagrams separate from the repository and not, don't save it back into your core repository until it's time to do so. And there's some various features here. I'm gonna show you a hierarchy map of capabilities here as well. And we also have workflows to help manage your diagrams. And then I'll also briefly mention the other project, product is UPMX. This is really an extension on the CSDMs. So we added some additional object types that support some of our functionality around enterprise architecture management. I am going to jump right into this demo here. Let's check my time, I'm almost out of time. Well, the good thing is this will not take very much time. So I'm logging into one of our, let me expand that, our demo service here. And then the menu there, I've got Designer. I can jump into Designer. Here I have a diagramming tool. I can query things that exist in our ServiceNow repository and bring them in, individual objects or sets of objects and relationships. What I'm gonna do is a different technique, though. I'm gonna create a hierarchy map and bring some things in. And I'm going to do business capabilities. I'm gonna do two layers deep. And I'm gonna put an indicator on it. I'm gonna look at my capability maturity. And I can decide how I want that indicator to appear in this case, I'm gonna go background, add that indicator, apply it. So there I have a body of capabilities that were in my ServiceNow repository. So here's capability map or color-coded according to that indicator that I had set. I can also add indicators to this. So I have maturity. I might say, let me look at health. And I'm gonna put a circle for that one. Where did it go? My circle should have appeared there. Oh, it didn't get selected here. Okay. For some reason, that's cooperating with me right at the moment. Well, I won't take up any more time. You get the idea. So I have a capability map in here and I can, as you can see, use different indicators to display some of the attribution I talked about earlier on my capability map. I can navigate around, I could change it, I could commit my changes to the repository. And we also have a workflow to manage that change process through approval steps. With that, I'm gonna quit because other people need to go. Thank you very much for the time. And John will send out, I think at the end of this session, more information if you want to get, get in touch with us and learn more about this. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I'm trying to get some of the links uploaded now and I will try to put as much as I can. I'm still struggling with teams a little bit, but hopefully those links that I just put in there work. And with that, we'll hand it right over. And hopefully Janet or Craig, I don't know which one of you guys is going to share.
Hi, John, yeah, this is Craig. You'll probably need to make me, make me presenter there.
Okay, you're gonna present from your side, Craig?
Yes.
Okay. So how do I make somebody a presenter? Whoever did that last time, would you be able to do that again? Craig Turner?
Yeah, I don't know if that was intentional, but my video sharing is disabled by you as well, John. I'm not sure. I did shower and put on the shirt today.
Hey, John, no, who's, you gonna give me the exact name and I will make them?
Sure, Craig Turner.
I'm presenting now, so let me know when you can see my screen.
There you go.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, demo. You can see my slide, but not the presentation mode?
Not presentation mode, no, just seeing the slides.
Try that again. This Teams isn't cooperating with me either. All right, how about that?
There we go, that works. There we go.
All right, so sorry about that technical there. Thank you, thanks, John, again for the opportunity, right, to let us present our story a little bit. And Peter, great setting the stage for a business capability concept. I'll give a first, just a quick intro. Todd Adams is gonna be joining us today as a manager, is our, our team is developing on the ServiceNow platform. Todd's the product owner for Esri CMDB and spearheading a product that's soon to be available on the ServiceNow store. Janet and I are both business architects within Esri's Enterprise Architecture Team. And we're gonna tell you a little bit about our journey with ServiceNow and Inspy and what we've learned by working together and highlight some of the unexpected benefits that we've gained through the experience of onboarding UPMX and Designer. But first, I'd like to give you a little bit of background for, for context. In 2018, our, our EA team was still finding its place within the company. But it was clear that on an organizational level, we needed to address gaps in communication, cross-functional alignment, prioritization, and capacity planning. Around this time, our head of sales and other key business leaders were presented with a capability roadmap by some external consultants and it really resonated with them. It came away stating, we need this for Esri. Around the same time, Esri was onboarding ServiceNow. The main driver was to improve our operations or help desk our incident, problem, change management, while better supporting our delivery teams. Our CIO believed it was necessary to get IT integrated. So his vision for DevSecOps is still being implemented today. As our part of our initial implementation was primarily a configuration of our previous toolset and then a large data migration. Once on the platform, our teams really took an interest in the CSDM. I think at that time, we were looking at the 2.0 version. Through much collaboration with our ServiceNow partners, Todd and teams began converting all the infrastructure and operations data to more of a services perspective. And then with the release of CSDM 3.0, our EA team started looking at opportunities to connect the dots from customer experience to architecture and then to delivery and then to operations. All roads brought us back to this business capability model. At Esri, as John mentioned, we're a geographic mapping company. We refer to this as our base map. The initial model was completed by curating tribal knowledge, smashing up industry frameworks, and administering volumes of Excel files. And I do mean volumes of Excel files. We had a ton of PowerPoints. We had numerous attempts to socialize the concepts with our CIO and other customer-facing division leadership. A lot of that was static images, not connected to data. So we experienced some levels of success with this activity and were rewarded with a proof-of-concept on-premises solution to help us administer and govern EA artifacts. Continuing that close collaboration with our ops team, we refined the enterprise capability model and planned to integrate it, the tools of our CMDB and our ServiceNow platform to bring that capability concept to life. And so with that, I'm actually gonna stop presenting here and hand over to Todd to let him give you a little bit of a demonstration of what our underlying structure looks like.
Okay, assuming you guys can see my screen there?
Yep.
All right, so we determined early on that we needed the tool discovery, which goes out and scans the network. We looked at what would ServiceNow give us without this discovery mapping tool and what would it give us with discovery? And we determined that we would have the equivalent of about 12 different tools that would all show relationships in a different way. And from the CMDB perspective, relationships is sort of the secret sauce of, of ServiceNow. And so we got discovery, but then quickly we realized, oh, these relationships are great, but there's a lot of them. Maybe more than, than what you would think. And so we thought, okay, we've got to find a way to look at data easily and filter out the noise. And so I'm in our application here. It's RTS Maps and this, like Craig mentioned, will be available soon in the store. And this is a way to view data in a, in a way, you can view it on any CI or CMDB group in, in the CMDB. And it's called our CMDB widget. It lives within the maps. And you can see here, we've got this interface where we can have multiple windowing and all that within ServiceNow inside our RTS map. And we found, look, I did this thing and we have a lot of relationships. We have relationships to track configuration files and network adapters. And on the infrastructure side is where we kind of built this out. And, and you could see there's a lot of things here, memory modules. So we made it to where you could just filter things out very easily. I don't want to see this, I don't want to see this very, very easily. Help me find these things, highlight class and you can just see them. You can have all of these actions that you, you do against, against these, these items. And we, a little plug for Inspy here, we actually have this integrated directly with Inspy where I can just right-click and it will bring up the CI for changes, incidents, as well as tools such as Designer right here, integrated within this CMDB widget. But we found that as we started building this out, we want, we always from the very beginning wanted to connect the enterprise capability. the enterprise capability model down to the infrastructure. And, you know, we went on that journey, and that seemed to resonate with a lot of folks. And so built this custom page that sort of identifies that capability model. And Janet will talk about that a little bit more in a second. But if I go in here, it opens up our CMDB widget, and I could say, okay, let's go down seven layers. And you see the capabilities here. And going down multiple layers, it will connect down to the infrastructure. And so then we can see what capabilities are real. So if this server goes down upstream, what capabilities could even be impacted? And. You could, you could see all the way down here, and you could see the different Inspy classes. So you can, we come all the way down to different, different areas, different ways to visualize the same data. Using this, and this will be free in the ServiceNow store soon. As well as heat maps similar to Inspy, where you can interact with this data. And we say, let's look at this capability model from the top down. And let's see how we're doing in terms of patching and which servers are. How are we doing in terms of that? And you can get very granular to. Two things, and you could see, okay, at this level even, you've got these things that participate in this service to map up to these processes, that map up all the way to the capabilities. So tying all of this together is really the digital twin of our organization. So very quickly go through that, pass it back to Janet.
So clearly, this widget that Todd just showed you generated a ton of interest at the executive level. This was a critical piece for us because the stakeholders began to understand just how powerful it could be to visualize connecting all of our data from the business capabilities all the way down to the blades in the server. So getting that buy-in is a huge win for our team. But as business architects, we found ourselves still pretty frustrated with the lack of flexibility in creating and defining the relationships, especially in with the objects like business capabilities. On top of all that, we were really challenged with figuring out how to keep our data in sync between ServiceNow and our legacy EA tool. So timing is everything. So just as we were in the thick of wrestling with these challenges, it was here on the Digital Services Work Group call where we first learned about Inspy. So Craig and I immediately were intrigued by this. We appreciated the attention given to the elements in this business architecture domain and the relationships, and the out-of-the-box visuals with UPMX, but also that ability to create those diagrams in Designer with the actual data elements from the CMDB with the built-in workflows for the appropriate governance. So we wound up shifting our entire approach to architecture on a dime. Our CIO was very vocal about wanting to leverage our existing platforms. And we knew that migrating our business architecture onto the Now platform would secure an even stronger endorsement from him. So I'm going to have Craig talk about what that relationship was like.
Thanks, Janet. Yeah, so I think, you know, as mentioned, our viewpoint at Esri has primarily been focused on business architecture. But in collaboration with our Inspy team, we defined and implemented nine use cases that are today enabling our team to align corporate goals and strategies with value streams and key stages of our customer interactions. This data model will enable us to map those value stages to our base map, the business capabilities. In other words, we're bridging the gap between business and IT. So while the Inspy meta-model supports these connections, this has not really been a focus of the Inspy team in the past. However, throughout our implementation, we had heavy commitment from our professional services lead and several interactions with principals of Inspy, as well as some of their core developers to help us achieve our objectives. The receptiveness of the team to understand what we are trying to accomplish, engage resources, and refine even their core product based on our feedback shows that we made a great decision and forged a partnership that we look forward to continuing into the future. Today, we're leveraging these tools to facilitate conversations and help our customers, our internal customers.
So after the go-live of Designer and UPMX, we continued on our path by targeting the coalition of the willing to further refine the data and our visualizations. So we extended this strategy to opportunistically tackle major pain points that we heard about. And one of these opportunities came at the end of our annual planning cycle. So as an organization, I think this is very familiar to many of you, we're challenged with managing the slew of demands for IT services and projects coming in from our internal customers. With the high volume, as an organization, it was difficult to see the commonalities among those demands. Beyond the sheer number, our business leaders were increasingly frustrated by not being able to visualize how or if those demands tied back to their strategic goals. So this gave us the opportunity to talk about capability-based planning. So up until this point, our business capability model that Todd had showed you was compelling, but it had not yet been validated by the business. So this year, we're going to be focusing our efforts on validating that capability model to enable planning, refining the data behind it, and then we're also building dashboards and landing pages for specific audiences.
Yeah, as part of that refining the data, we have members of our extended team that include an information architect. He's currently heavily invested in working through a master data initiative, as well as different feed store initiatives. Additionally, we have an integrations architect who's just beginning to realize the power of the platform and the connectivity connectivity that we've been pulling together. So as we refine our business architecture and mature the information flows, we'll need to mature our application landscape and train or bring in resources to help us mature that domain of architecture. So we see this as our next step in the journey and happy to see that ServiceNow has a mature toolset aligned with our vision to help us in the future. So with that, we're very excited to hear more from Doran about this product. And with that, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, take it away, Doran. I know you can share because you're internal.
Yeah, I should be able to. You're right. Yeah, let me see that it's all working. All the parts are working. Yeah. Yeah, I can share it. Yeah, no problem.
Excellent.
So let me start with a few slides. And yeah, I think most of the work was already done by the former speaker, so I just. Need to. So what I'll talk a little bit is about the application portfolio management and how we leverage capability-based planning in the APM portfolio in ServiceNow. And all this ties very naturally with Inspy. So everything that you saw from the diagrams that were presented before by. By Peter and later on is really tied. It's the same. This is the great thing, that it's the same baseline of data that you can visualize it in multiple ways and take actions. And I think that with Inspy, you can have a much better visualization on the same data that we are presenting with the application portfolio management data. So just to give a brief overview, the. APM is really enterprise architected oriented tool for managing the application portfolios. So it creates a baseline for all the application, and then it provides several capabilities. Some of them is really to help you to rationalize the application base, so to understand which applications might be sunset, or which application should be invested, and to provide you this understanding. The other areas, the first one in which we are going to focus more today is the alignment to the business capabilities and to see things really from the level that was described as the, starting with the what, and then understanding what are the applications that support this what? And going down, it's also the level of technology. So we are definitely able to show an end-to-end view of the applications to the technology. And because this ServiceNow portfolio is wide, to include also software asset management or hardware asset management, and to include the lifecycle of them, we can also show how the risks of the end-of-life cycle might affect this technology or this business application, and eventually this capability. And the last, which is an area that is really growing, is the improvement of governance on the information data that is being sent by different applications, and this is by the management of the information portfolio. And when I'm going into the business capability maps, you can see that we are able to capture the same hierarchy of capabilities that was presented originally and can be reflected in the Inspy Designer module. And this capability map says all the, you need to treat it with the same guidance that we're giving in the beginning to make it as firm and as clear as possible. Theoretically, we do support six layers of capabilities in the model, but usually we will recommend to go a bit thinner. Usually what we see is three to four layer of capabilities. And one of the main things that we allow, and it's important, is of course the hierarchy of the capabilities, which is clear. But the other major thing is the ability to assess the capabilities based on a different criteria. These are dynamic criteria from, example, the processes, the people that support them, and so on, and eventually to give them a normalized score based on these assessments. Within each capabilities, we're also capable of seeing the gaps that exist for this capability to achieve its optimal status. And we can do it also by aggregating the below assessment. So if I'm having capabilities, and then I'm having children of these capabilities, I can propagate this assessment to the top layer. And I can do it also for, from the business applications that supports these capabilities all the way up to the top layer of the capabilities. And I will show a very brief demo today, just one or two minutes, just to show you the same screen. How it looks in actually in the ServiceNow platform. And with this capability-based planning, we can actually do three things, three main things that you want to do with capabilities. One is to define them and understand the capability mappings, and understand how to relate business applications to the capabilities, so you can have everything in order. And maybe there are business applications that you're surprised to see because they don't support any capabilities, or you find that you have gaps in some of the capabilities, and they are not supported sufficiently by business application. The assessment is the part that we let you review the quality of the business capabilities, how they're being provided. Out of the box, we deliver it with assessment and dimension of people, process, and technologies. And of course, this can be extended. We have an assessment model within ServiceNow that can be ranking capabilities and can help you later to normalize these scores depending on the metrics that you're using to score, to normalize it to the same metrics or the same scale for all the capabilities. And within this, we can identify based on the score, if you have any major gap, medium gap, or no gap at all. So it means you're in a green status with the capabilities. And as I mentioned, we can also do the same assessments on business applications. Of course, the scoring might be different, so we might collect information from IT SM on the number of incidents, or from surveys that we will send to the users of their applications, or from metrics that we'll get from the monitoring solution, and so on. And the last part, which is not less important, is the ability to act upon them. So we allow you to create direct connection, to create, for example, ideas based on what you see, to create goals, or to create programs, so you can initiate demands or actions in order to fix it. And of course, there are models that manage it, so it's models that support the like project and portfolio management that supports these capabilities to act upon them. From terms of visibility, I came, my background is really the discovery and the discovery solutions. And it's like mentioned, discovery can create a huge amount of links and can create a lot of technical links. But often, if you don't connect it to some conclusion or to some processes and to some up-level understanding, then the discovery by itself might not serve a great value. But it really serves a great value because, as you can see, we can connect all the way top-down from the business capabilities to the business application and the specific deployments of application services in environment. And if you have specific components, technical components that were discovered, they can be connected to the application services. So it's really a great combination of data from the actual implementation all the way to the logical layer. So if you get to understand what affects a business capability in your organization. I just, in today's morning call, I had an internal call, so we had several customers that when the recent Log4j event wanted to know, okay, if I'm taking out Log4j from my organization, which capabilities I'm affecting on the top level? And the kind of view like this can show you really, okay, if you eliminate this Log4j on the balance, I can affect this business capability, so I can still have some business capabilities on the top that will not be impacted. So this is really a great view that combines logical components and the technology components together in the same view. Yes, and here is the things that I referred to. So it's really developing and helping you to understand the end-to-end application for a technical side on the business side. And it's really a great alignment of IT and the business and the top level of the business, which usually it's a step above the core discovery and technical assessment of your organization. So it's really taking it one level up from these steps. Here is the capability hierarchy map that I've shown before. So you can see on this capability map, we show usually the capability score. If you think about the terms that Inspy show, these are the indicators that you can show on the map. So once you move it to the Inspy map in the designer, you will see the same scores, and they can be indicators and can color the things in different way. Here we have the different layers, and of course, we can assess all these capabilities based on a specific year. So you can not just see how this capability is performing now, but also go back and look into time and see how things change over time. We collect it and gather it, and then makes the assessment for quarters and then for the entire fiscal year. And as I mentioned, one of the things that we allow you to do is to also act upon these capabilities. So you can create for me, you can create ideas or goals or programs, and do it based on the evidence that you see and the information that you get from these screens. So let me just show it in two minutes, and then I'll pass it on to you. This was my main slide. So basically, this is the same slide that I've shown you now, and you can see the hierarchy of capabilities. And inside each capabilities, you can see the sub-capabilities. So capabilities that do not have major gaps will be on the green side. And the ones that are on medium gaps will be yellow. I don't have any red, but once we dive in, we can see more information on these capabilities. We can see the live capabilities. We can see the people, process, and technology, which are the assessments that we assign to these capabilities. And I can click here and see more details on any of this information. I can also see the direct or indirect business applications that are related to these capabilities, and I can see the specific scoring. If I click on this, I will go to the specific business application information in ServiceNow, and then I can see, of course, much more data on the business application. And the last is if I have services that are attached to it, in this case, I don't have any service, I can see the service. And as I mentioned, I can go and see the information on the business application and get to see it in the service. in the ServiceNow platform. So this is the information that we have for the capability. And one of the things is the assessments that I mentioned, the CI scores based on the quarters and the years that we can collect both for applications and both for the capabilities. And I think, John, these, these were the major things that I wanted to present today. And I'll just give it back to you.
All right, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, I have lag on my machine again. I was going to show a demo today, but I think because of the, the problems I'm having, I'm not going to be able to do it. If you do go on to our Digital Service Work Group instance, you will be able to see, it's still showing. Still showing on my mic is muted. You're hearing me Doran?
Yeah, I can hear you John, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, so on the instance, there's a couple of things that's new. Number one, it's on San Diego. Number two is I applied the, the dark theme for Polaris. So it has a new view. So if you go on there and you click on workspaces, you should be able to see the digital portfolio management workspace and, and be able to get to that view. And also on that one, if you, if you're able to go on and impersonate me, impersonate John Spearco, and you go to the favorites, for my favorites, you'll see two links in there. There's one link to APM, which is the application portfolio management stuff we saw today. And there's also another link to Designer. And you can go in Designer and you will be able to create the same thing that Peter did today. So if you go into Designer, you should be able to go to import and then import the capabilities from the APM plugin for ServiceNow. So all of that should be available to you guys on that, on that demo instance. If you don't have access to the demo instance, you can shoot it over to me. One thing I don't have on there and I didn't expect today is Todd jumped in with us from, from Esri. And I do not have that Esri plugin on here yet, but I'll make a point to, to let's get it on this instance, on this Digital Service Work Group instance. And then next time, we should be able to share that as well. It's where I can put a link to it so that you can, you can see what Todd was showing today from, from Esri. So basically what it does is it projects that structure from the services you're defining. You're able to project that on a geographic map or some of the other maps that, that Todd showed before. So the instance, I see a couple of you asking where the instance is. This is a link to the instance, but you'll need a login. So anybody that's on this group that sends me a, an email and just asks me for a login, I'll give you a login to the instance if you don't have one already, or if you need your password reset. I'll be able to go ahead and, and give that to you. So if you don't have a login to that instance, I just put in there. I'll see if I can, I'm going to attempt to share and see if my computer cooperates. But this is that new Polaris theme I was talking about, where you're able to go up to digital portfolio management. I've been working a little bit on this state and local government portfolio. So this is one that has some things in it. There's also another portfolio I have up here. We did a couple industries. Somebody wants to put a healthcare in one, that would be great. We have a lot of healthcare people. But I also have the one besides state and local, the one from the e-car. So this is the, those of you that are on from the education, this is the, the model from Educcause. And underneath there, I don't go all the way down to the offerings, but I do go down to the service level. The offerings underneath are mostly nonsense, but it does at least bring that service level in there. So if anybody wanted to, you can even go down and if, if something is appealing to you to get started with your service structure, not necessarily, this isn't the capability structure that we talked about today. But a lot of these should map pretty close together. Like I, I would see where these, some of these things that we have up here that I can use them, go back and forth between using it for the service structure and the capability structure. Now what I also said here is if you go on my favorites, so if you do come in and impersonate me, you'll, you'll come on to my user and then you'll be able to go into my favorites and you'll be able to see Designer. Right? So you can bring up Designer and then you can go ahead and if I wanted to, I would be able to go ahead and insert hierarchy map, just like Peter did today. I can go into my capability table. And then what I did is we have a lot in here because a lot of people have been messing around in here. So I applied a filter, which would just take us down and get us a subset of that. So you can use that filter if you want. And then for an indicator, I can use the business capability table. I would be able to use, I think we, I think Peter used health in his, and then I can color the background of those imports with the capability health. Once I apply that, it'll go ahead and bring on our demo instance, it should bring that in. And then what I'd be able to do is some, I did something wrong on my indicator. But the, you can see the data came in and it mapped the capabilities in our demo instance. And then what I'll do is I'm going to, just in case you do go into this instance, I'm going to save these changes into, I'll just say March 22nd meeting. All right. So, so if you come into the Designer and you don't want to go ahead and do the import or you forget what we did, you'll just be able to come down into the diagram and then you'll be able to go into the folder here. And you should see that, that one I just put in there for our meeting today. So you should be able to pull up the diagram that I just created. It looks like a lot of people are in here trying Designer out. So that's great. And then the last piece I wanted to show you real quick is kind of the same thing that Doran did. If you wanted to go in here and experiment with APM, I did install APM on here and you will be able to go to my favorites and you'll be able to go instead of Designer under APM. And that home is ours is going to look a little different than, than the one that Doran showed, but at least that'll give us a little bit of a view of what APM looks like and be able to drill down. Now, one of the really important parts in here that I like, and Lou from San Diego has presented to us a few times. If you click on the technology portfolio, this is really where the CM, the CMDB and the Common Service Data Model work. It really pays off. Because what we're able to do up here is if we look at this, this avid employee engagement system, right? Which is the business application. You can see down here, we're able to roll up all of the underlying technologies. So this goes down into the application service, which if you guys remember in the Common Service Data Model, that's the part that represents the technology stack. It's going to bubble up from those application services, all of that underlying technology that it discovered underneath it. So this is where discovery really pays off by being able to crawl all those individual hosts that are supporting the avid employee engagement system and really bring all that up to the top surface. So this technology portfolio management is a really useful piece for assessing your risk on your applications. And next week, we're going to have a guest in to talk about BCM, but business continuity management and how you use some of these service models to, to support that effort. And in fact, to where you can't even do business continuity management without a model like what we're talking about in the Common Service Data Model. So it's really nice to be able to see, this is the start of kind of that BCM discussion, but it's really nice to, to be able to assess your services in this way so that you can get a feel for all of that underlying technology. If there's any questions, if you could post it in the, the chat or, or send me an email. And I send out a newsletter by the end of the week, which will kind of summarize what we talked about today and also give you access to the recordings. For those of you that didn't get that Google Drive. And then we'll, we'll pick up these conversations. I know we jammed a lot in today, but if there's more you want to hear or somebody that wants to come on and speak and give us more knowledge around this area, I'd really appreciate it. I want to thank our guests real quick today. So Doran, I want to thank everybody from Esri and Peter from Inspy jumping on. That was great content that we shared to get a really, a good feel for that EA domain. That brings us right up to our last minute. And thank you very much for everybody that attended. And we'll talk to you in a few weeks on our, for our session on business continuity management.
Thank you.
Thank you.